Ready to go?
Yep.
Great, grab it.
Okay. Bastian?
Here.
Knower?
Here.
McCord?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Nurse Singer?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
Weiser?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Okay, in the drop, we had the minutes from July 9th, draft version of those. Uh, everyone should have a chance to keep a look at them. Any corrections, comments, concerns that anyone noticed?
I don't have any.
No.
If there are any, I guess we can have a...
Motion. Make a motion approving this. Second.
Thank you.
Hi, Bastian?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
And Tidings?
Aye.
Moving on to our first and only tabled item is 2775 Penfield Road. As we indicated in the drop, we have received revised plans for this project. They've done their perk test, they've been out. They submitted these plans for Monroe County Health Department review, uh, submitted to us for staff's review and from the board. Again, we've taken no action on this because we've been waiting for the updated plans. Um, at this point, due to the changes, um, zoning board is also having the same options to look at, uh, whether or not, um, the board would like to entertain the option to hold another peer- public hearing due to the changes that we see here, or if we'd like to continue table this application as we wait for the county's decision and zoning board's, uh, decisions that they're meeting next week regarding setbacks that they're requesting for this property. Um, as we'll see on here, the shed was removed from the plan as the first, uh, iteration of it. We had a shed over here. That was since removed because they're gonna keep the barn that was existing. They're just rehabbing it right now. The location of the house changed because of the septic system that's now proposed out there. So the house done like a flip-flop basically, but the setbacks are still there for the front and rear setbacks that they need from the zoning board. So at this point, we can open up for discussion about how the board would like to proceed as staff begins to review it and we await more comments about the new designs we've seen.
Anybody have any thoughts?
Well, the septic system is kind of one big item on this plan and I guess I'd like to see the verification that it's gonna work and that it's approved by Monroe County Health Department and whoever else has to take a look at it.
Yeah, that was kind of the big feature we were waiting for, the size of it. You know, they kinda had a small bu- well, we kinda knew that, they had a big, a small box before.
Yeah, fixed up a lot of the...
And showed the house, we knew that'd have a big impact on the, on the site plan and it's kinda...
Correct.
It's moved the house to the other side, it's moved the driveway location. It's, uh, obviously the septic system got bigger, the barn stayed the same. So it seems like there's some, you know, it's a small lot, it seems like there's some significant revisions. Uh, staff has yet to take a look at this. You know, it's up to the boards whether they wanna have another, you know, public hearing on this and make it available for the neighbors to...
Yeah.
Don't septic systems have to be a certain distance from the property line?
That's some of the variances they're gonna have to...
But that's a health code thing.
I think ten, ten feet is the minimum from the property line, that's what they're showing.
Well, except the future expansion is less than ten feet.
Yes, well, it's, depends the spacing of the, the lines.
Um, sometimes the health department lets you go between the lines if there are ten-foot spacing. And I can't see what the dimension is there, but if you have a ten-foot spacing, sometimes the expansion area can be between the lines, but those are, you know, all good points that we're gonna wanna hear from the health department. You know what their, their comments are and obviously the, the neighbors, you know, will have similar comments and questions.
And that's a, um, that's a fill system?
Yes.
As well.
Yep, and that was one of the comments the neighborhood previously that there was, you know, some potential for groundwater, you know, groundwater seasonal in that area. And that's probably what they discovered, that's why they're showing a raised fill system is basically there's groundwater in here and they have to do a raised fill to accommodate that.
As far as process, it would probably be cleanest to have them withdraw the current application and submit for new...
And we did have that conversation with them this morning. Uh, so that kinda draws this previous piece, not this up on the screen currently, but the previous application before us. Uh, we had continued tabled and then we had it as a no-action item. Uh, they offered to withdraw that, you know, if the board wanted to see there's another public hearing. So we can, we'll note that in the, in the thing.
Does everyone agree with that?
I think that's the best way to go, I think.
Yeah, we're going to go with another public hearing and they can see the new plan that's actually proposed.
Get all zoning things straightened out.
Put it on our September agenda.
PRC will get a chance to look at it.
And we'll have comments for the board and then, um, we'll have a few comments back from the county as well at that point.
From the Monroe County Health Department?
Yep. We'll take 2:30 AM, they've gotten the applications, so they have the opportunity to comment.
So for tonight, the table, we take no action?
Um, I think we would just note that it's been withdrawn, so if there's an action of the board...
Right, 'cause they, they said they're gonna withdraw it. Did they present a writing that they're withdrawing it?
We had a verbal conversation on the phone that they're withdrawing it, we'll get something in writing.
Yeah, knowing that you just noted from record that it's been withdrawn and waiting, pending receipt of formal notice to that effect from the applicant.
The reapplication.
Okay. And then this'll be, uh, your first item on the agenda for September.
Okay.
Uh, for the zoning board, what are the, is there like a list of variances that they're asking for?
Um, obviously, front and rear setbacks.
Size of house, maybe?
Well, well, if they get the setback variance, that's what creates the box for setbacks. We don't dictate house size as well, but based on the, on the fifty-foot front setback and the thirty-foot rear setback, the lot's only a hundred and fifteen feet, so that doesn't give them much room to...
There's, uh, isn't there a minimum for New York State, you mean, eight hundred square foot?
What's that?
For house size. Is there a minimum for New York State? I thought there was. Be a question for Tom Hill.
Okay.
What's, what's the size of this lot?
Uh, I think it's three tenths of an acre, so it's a hundred and fifteen by a hundred and seventy-one. So it's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, it's in a two-acre zoning district.
Okay, so it's pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah, so it pre-exists less than our code allows. Uh, it was a lot created before zoning code, and it predates 1981's update to the zoning code, so it pre-exists that timeframe.
Harold said that concrete patio also would be a variance too.
We, in the, a conversation that I had today, they're gonna remove that.
And it's two acres over. If it's a, if it's a...
That's a lot?
This is a two-acre zoning district, correct?
Wow. So if it comes back in for September, will this board hear it before the zoning board hears it?
Yes.
This is type one?
Yeah, so we'll take, this board will be the lead on it, they'll take one action and then the zoning board will hear it on the third and then it'll be back before this board on the work session. So we'll note that as withdrawn for this evening. Round where, I don't know, just go over that.
Mislanders.
Missing items.
Yep, missing items, uh, did include that, let's see. We got another request from Guru Dwar- Guru Dwarah, I always have trouble saying that, um, requesting an extension from their approval. In the sequence of extensions we've given them so far, uh, their lawsuit is about to be wrapped up in the appeal process. According to them, it's in their favor, however, they're just not there yet, um, in terms of doing any site work. So they've come back, uh, in this drop this evening, we put a letter from an email, um, asking for the ninety-day extension. That's the wrong one. Just to get them through the summer, they plan on doing site work within the next couple of months, um, which is a good sign. So it's up to the board to...
So building ninety days?
Give them ninety days, we've previously done one-year extensions. But recommend, based on what they told us from their construction timeline, that we'd like to have ninety days.
Contractors and looking to do some site work and once they, you know, get some site work done, that would preserve their site plan from there. So their intent is not to keep coming back to this board.
Are they still in the courts?
Continuing, it's in an appeals process now, but they feel confident enough that they would, um, do some tree clearing, do some minor stuff on the site and if they feel...
To trigger their vest, the vest?
The vest, their interest in it.
Even, even though there might be some...
Not the building construction, but if they, you know, cleared the area for the parking lot or did some, uh, stuff, put up erosion control fence, did some things to this, does their, their interest in the, in the site plan, so that's their intent.
All right, now they make the motion.
Well, I just have one question, would it hurt to give them another one-year extension?
I mean, it's up to the board if you wanna...
If it's still in the courts, I could see maybe ninety days is long enough, but if they're that confident, then okay, we could go with a ninety day if that's what they're asking for.
In the, in the letter, they, they requested, they either extension, um, we suggested that ninety day be rec- be asked for first because of, you know, how they feel their position is, but if the board feels a one-year is, is necessary or plus the board, we could use it.
When that extension is given, is that for the start of construction? Does the permitting then still run like a year from the start or how's...
Once they start construction, that preserves their site plan based on our indefinitely. I mean, that's what ran into it Ellison Heights, they went out there, they cleared trees, they did some basic stonework on their pad, just to...
That's why you might wanna give a year, because what they're looking to do, it sounds like, is that they're gonna do, uh, if they get ninety days, then they're gonna, um, just do enough to trigger their, you know, vesting while they're still, it doesn't sound like they're exactly sure that it's, their lawsuit's gonna be over. And so then you could end up with a situation where you got, you know, Ellison. They're coming back.
The other group may put a stop work order on it or some, I don't know.
This also sounds familiar, I think the last time we renewed for a year, they said they were gonna get out there and clear and put some erosion, I remember this.
Well, this, this was under, uh, under lawsuit last year. The lawsuit came back, the group that we've been talking to, there was two groups within the church that have been going back and forth. They won the original case that was appealed, so now they're in the appeal process, so they had officially had...
I'm just saying, they, they...
They won the case and were ready to get started and then the appeal came and now they're...
They said they were gonna do that the last time and it's still another year later and I don't think they've cleared anything yet, so.
So if the board's supportive of the year, then do the year and then...
Yeah, do any year.
We give them ninety and they don't start at work, then we just...
I mean, they could go back to...
Or they do get...
They come back to work in ninety days and...
Or they do start work and then it could be another, you know, who knows how long before their lawsuit's done and now you've got this partially cleared land or...
Or it has to get recovered or something.
That way they won't feel compelled that they have to do something within the ninety.
Start and stop and the erosion, everything else could come in, so. Okay.
So we're all...
Have to take a vote on the extension.
A green one year, we just need to have a motion for a one-year extension.
So Tidings and McCord, can we, does that still stand?
Uh, if you want to, you know, want...
I'll, I'll, I'll second the one year. Go.
Okay, that's fine.
Don't get the first.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Bastian?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
Other item that was not on the agenda with comments that came today is a miscellaneous item. Um, briefly, the zoning board will have their meeting next week on one of the items, was Baytown signage. They're not being a Walmart signage on their building, they're coming in with a special permit request for the number of signs on their, on the Walmart building. Okay, thirty-seven pages. This might take me a minute to find.
Is this the head?
Yes, we brought two hard copies. There it goes. Do some panning. So they're asking, the, the code allows for, they're under the square footage.
One building mounted sign and you're allowed two square feet for every foot of the building. So it's a roughly six-hundred-foot building, so they're allowed a twelve-hundred-square-foot sign, one of them.
Maybe you'll have to stretch out the law.
They can stretch out Walmart. So they're asking for six signs.
Six?
The main Walmart and then is actually like one showing for pharmacy, one showing for market. So as they break up the building face, they're labeling each area. The total of the square footage they're asking for is five hundred and forty-eight or five hundred and... Uh, square feet, so they're well under the, they're about half of what they, they could have is one sign.
There's actually two on that one. There's a recycle sign on that.
But they're asking for six signs and the one sign that they're allowed. And so the zoning board, uh, asked if the planning board had any input or whether you're supportive of that, not supportive of that. Uh, the zoning board should be hearing that, uh, next week, Pete?
Yes, the twentieth.
They're on the twentieth.
Has Harold said whether or not all of these, are all of these, um, considered signs, like the pharmacy and, you know, okay.
So they're well under the square footage they're allowed, but they're getting the more numbers of signs than what they're allowed by our code. So the board asked if you had any opinion, you could say we have no opinion, we support it, whatever.
Or just no opinion?
Yeah.
It's completely up to the board, they just asked for any thoughts or concerns the board would have. Sixes on the market, under market, there's a recycle sign as well. That, very pixelated.
It's similar to like what it says, right?
I think that's where the can return goes or...
Yeah. There.
I don't have a problem with this.
Kind of labeling the different areas, multiple entrances. I think it helps with parking, people spread out rather than focused right on the main door. We pull into the area that you're looking to go to.
It's helpful to have it that way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
So we, do you wanna vote to send a letter of support to the zoning board?
Sure, sure.
I don't have a problem with it either. Looks, looks great, the building looks great. The sign doesn't detract from it at all.
No, I think it helps break it up a little bit and provide a little information to them.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to send it if you need somebody to name, I guess.
One second. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Bastian?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
None, I think we were just gonna, Zach's gonna quickly run through the September applications. See, we won't have any discussions since we haven't opened a public hearing, but just...
It's an FYI.
FYI is what you're receiving in your drop tonight.
So...
Typically, we give them to you in your work sessions, but since August, we don't have a, a second work session of the month. We've given you all your materials tonight and then we'll supplement with anything else we get before the meeting.
Which would be PRC memos or Monroe County comments that come in or any neighbor feedback that we get. So first one that we've agreed to have is 2775 Penfield Road, we know that's gonna be on the agenda now. We have a sketch plan at 2128 2132 Penfield Road. This is at the corner of Paris Wayland Park. Coming in for a medical office building, just the proposed layout, this is a sketch plan again, so anything is subject to change. Most of our development so far, uh, has been more towards the front of the road, so we'll be looking at that as staff.
Public hearing for eyesight tonight is at the other end of this line.
Is that a one-story or two-story?
One-story, so.
So that's a big footprint.
Or two lots.
Two, two lots.
Two lots, okay.
So they're, they're looking at two, two homes that are on that corner.
So that's that one.
They're gonna combine both lots into one tanks?
Yep.
I didn't say it's sketch, but that appears what they're showing.
Yes. And then we have Heathwood coming back for their expansion, the memory care unit that they wanted to add on. We had the sketch plan on this and they've come back with their responses and revised plans. And they'll be coming in for September for preliminary final of this. The layout stayed pretty much the same, so we'll talk about that in September. And last but not least, Atlantic and Five Mile, 2826 Atlantic Avenue for a eighty-six lot subdivision. They'll be coming in, they've done their traffic studies and they've submitted that in their engineer's report, uh, showing two entrances as opposed to one that they showed in the sketch plan. And they're coming in for preliminary overall approval of the entire subdivision and section one final approval, which is this section here, um, to start building on that. So we expect a decent turnout for that, we've had residents consistently ask us since the sketch plan about any updates to this and we've been providing updates as it comes in and we just got this application, so we'll be informing them what's going on.
Didn't we talk about a second entrance off Atlantic?
That's something, you know, we had concerns as staff in the state DOT with the, with the curve there and everything else, but that's, wasn't the best location for it. Obviously, they're showing two curb cuts on a five-mile line, that's a county road. So we'll submit that to the county and, uh, you know, wait their comments as well.
Okay, and that's all we got for September.
It's gonna be a lot of that.
Say we haven't had a, a busy meeting in a while, we haven't had a large subdivision like this in a while either, so this is something we haven't seen in a while and the public hearings in a night is getting back to where we used to be. Um, that's all the miscellaneous other items we have.
Okay.
Want to adjourn until...
Yeah, let's adjourn until the public hearing.
Recede.
Recede, recess until the public hearing.
Re-adjourn at the end.
Good evening and welcome to the August thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen Planning Board Meeting. Uh, let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have one item on the agenda, a preliminary and final application. Uh, how the process works is that we'll listen to the applicant and then we'll have questions from the board. After the board's questions are complete, we'll take questions from anyone in the audience. When we're finished with this application, we will reconvene in the back of the auditorium to continue the work session. If you have any questions in the following days, please don't hesitate to contact the planning department and speak to either Zach, Nurse Singer, or Doug Sangster. Okay, Zach?
Thank you. Application number one, Rob Wolf of Wolf Architecture, three North Main Street, Honeyway Falls, New York, 14472, on behalf of Dr. Benjamin Peters and Dr. Justin Verone, requests under Article nine-dash-nine-dash-two of the code for preliminary and final site plan modification approval for the construction of a six-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty square-foot optometry medical office on zero-point-four-six acres located at twenty-one forty-two Penfield Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. The property is now reformally owned by four-four-one Realty Group LLC and is owned BNR. Application number fifteen P dash zero-zero-one-seven, SBL number one-three-nine-point-zero-eight-dash-one-dash-seven-three. Go ahead.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Benjamin Peters, one of the owners of Eyesight, which is, um, currently, you're residing at twenty-one sixty Penfield Road and looking to move to twenty-one forty-two Penfield Road. And hopefully beginning our building in the spring of next year, two thousand and sixteen. What came up after our last time we had been in front of the board was the fact that we started digging into the plans a little bit more, getting further along in our planning details. And we looked at the front room of the building, our main, um, patient area there, our waiting area and kind of reception area, I guess you could say. And it was just, we, with all the necessary desks and arrangements and everything else, it seemed a little tight. So, um, what we were hoping to do was gain four additional feet on the front of the building um, without adjusting any of the current setbacks that we, that have been approved previously. Um, we understand that the addition, uh, the additional footage, square footage, um, would require more parking spaces. However, we've already been, um, we've already been approved for the twenty parking spots and with this additional square footage, we're not expecting any additional employees more than before or any addition, any more patients than we were expecting before. So it's, it's strictly just making the space a little more roomy for our current, um, you know, estimates of patients and, um, employees. And the other, uh, points that I wanted to bring up were that the, um, we're not decreasing the setback at all, which, which I had already mentioned, and, um, you know, we're currently using the same setback distance. We're just decreasing the current hardscape as well, so as far as the, um, the drainage is concerned, um, you know, that should be a wash, basically, it should be, uh, we're not decreasing our green space by any more than we had already been approved for.
Okay, so the, uh, architecture of the building is gonna be pretty much the same, just a little bit bigger?
Exact same, yes, yes, essentially just that front of the building, the front room is just going to be extended out four additional feet. Um, the appearance of the building from the road, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. I mean, it will essentially be the same.
And the reason for this is to provide more, uh, waiting room space, a better layout for that?
Well, we started looking at it, we started looking at the pathways where the patients would walk, um, in between desks and this and the walls and, um, you know, the, the, um, other additional furniture that would be in the room and, um, even, you know, minimizing the size of our desks and chairs and everything as much as we could. It seemed, still seemed a little bit too tight for, um, some of our elderly patients and, and wheelchair patients. We're gonna be bringing them through, so if there was too many people waiting to check out and they, they were trying to get around, um, it just seemed a little too tight for those, for those circumstances.
Okay, so the parking lot's gonna be a little smaller by four feet?
Um, essentially, no, we're not, we're not taking the full four feet off the parking lot. We're going to extend out in the front and there was originally a small patio on the front and some, um, landscaping up there and that will be decreased in size. And then we're also going to come out onto the, um, the back walkway, we're going to decrease that. So we're kind of shaving off a foot here, a foot there, I think essentially, um, it should be more clearly listed in the, in the plans that, in the packet that our architect had sent out.
Okay.
But we, um, do not plan on, um, removing the full four feet from the parking lot.
Okay, so the lighting, the signage, access, all that stays the same?
All the same, all the same.
Okay.
So, yes, so, yeah, that's, that's, that's it.
Okay.
And, oh, one more thing I wanted to mention, the, um, as far as the parking is concerned, we, um, in the packet that we handed out or emailed over, um, there are original plans, we had leased three spots from Summit Bank next to us, that still holds true, we didn't include that, forgot to include that in the packet.
Three spots from Summit?
We have three spots from Summit and then also the new parking allotment that we had gotten was from the other side. Joe Belanca on the other side of us also said that, um, he would be willing to, um, lease us parking space as well.
Okay, all right. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Just to make sure now, there's not gonna be any new variances requested for these changes that you just spoke of, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
No more questions?
I, I've got just one, there's a concrete pad shown, is that just, that's where the handicap parking would, uh, that's for the van, for the handicap parking?
Yes.
Is that all that is? Okay.
Okay. All right, the board has no more questions? Does anyone in the audience have a question? We have no audience, by the way. So, uh, if the board has no more questions, uh, we can close this.
Great, thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
We on the deck?
Yes, we're gonna go.
Hello, welcome back.
I'm a little confused on the variances on this, I thought they were gonna have to go through another parking variance because of the parking.
They do, that's the one point we, we do need to clarify is that...
Sorry, I misspoke on that.
Okay, we, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on, there's gonna be just one new variance asked for?
Okay, okay.
Their increase in the square footage of the building... They're increasing the square footage of the building, so adding the four feet to the building increases the square footage, our code is based on square footage of the building, requires the number of parking spaces required.
Right.
So you have twenty spaces, we can look up the exact number, I believe you need one additional parking space.
Right, so the original variance was from twenty-six spots and we were approved for twenty, and now we're at twenty-seven spots and we'd still like to be approved for twenty, so that's how I was thinking about it.
So that required a variance before the zoning board.
Okay, yes.
What about the size of the parking, go from eighteen to sixteen?
Basically, it's just, you're just putting parking bumpers in, we have parking bumpers on their locations, so that would be at the purview of this board, it's not really a variance, it's just a, it's a site plan, site plan modification.
And the, and the driving aisle, the fire marshal was looking at this and who's okay with it for access?
Yeah, that's, that's us, again, we do have twenty-two foot aisles in certain locations in the town, our code actually says you have nine by twenty spaces, we don't dictate what the driving aisle is, typically it's twenty-four. As we make it smaller, we try to make sure it's, it's large enough, I think our PRC's comment was, you know, we made it, wanted to have some signs up saying compact car parking in that area. It's only modifying that first row, and you can see, kind of, Zach's got the split screen showing those four parking spaces right up against the building.
Nine by sixteen?
There's, there's still nine by eighteen spaces, they're putting a parking bumper there, 'cause our code says you have to have seven feet when it's up against a parking stall, just to account for the overhang of a vehicle over it, so we can maintain the five-foot handicap accessibility passageway through there. They've come back and said we'd like to put parking bumpers in there, so you can still have the overhang, so it's still a nine by eighteen space, the overhang doesn't infringe on that seven foot, which is now five foot, handicap accessibility pathway, so they're just trying to meet our intent of having the seven foot by, but keeping, you know, the walk to five feet, so they gain two feet in there and then they make the aisle twenty-two feet, so it's up to the purview of this board for basically, it'd be a site plan modification for that portion of it. They still have to go to the zoning board for the one additional parking space.
Okay. Is there a, does the setback variance change?
If we have their application, I believe the front setback remains the same.
Okay, sorry, I misspoke on that.
I think the front.
No additional variance, I just did the eye exam, I don't know.
As long as you get the eye chart stuff right.
You do all the important.
Yeah, 'cause I believe they're showing the dimension is forty feet on the left, lower left side, so I believe they're holding the front.
And that hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed.
And the fifteen feet.
And then, so they're just taking the four feet, so.
This changes, it's moving back.
Yeah, but that, that impacts the drive aisle.
But it's within the setback.
Yeah, so that stayed at seven feet, so.
So they're not gonna need a variance for the other setback?
No, they should only need a setback for just the parking.
Just one parking area increase. And then we can manage the sixteen versus eighteen foot by putting parking curbs onto the sidewalk, right? Is that what?
They're putting the parking, they're basically putting the wheel stops.
Oh, wheel stops further back.
Further back, so basically the overhang would go up to, right up to the five feet, so it's almost like having the sidewalk there, but.
If you have like an eight-foot overhang, a little sixty-seven.
Driving an old Impala or something.
Driving a boat, yeah.
An old hand yacht.
So we look at those for the planning board, for, those are site plan modifications, whether the board is, is comfortable with those, but we still have to wait for the zoning board to grant a variance for the parking on that. I know Zach had the comment, I don't know if you want to share that, your thought?
As we expressed, you know, as we've seen in the documents that are submitted, there's a ladder between them and Summit that read overflow parking, one of the things that we'd probably like to see, and we'd like to see from staff's side, is, you know, facilitating some way to get patients from one property to the next, other than walking all the way around the site to their cars, so I'm assuming that the parking that's been agreed upon, I'll, when they jump to an area to make it a little bit easier, is in the front, so having a walkway, something to get people safely across the two properties to and from their.
Without walking out to the road.
Without walking out to the road or all the way around, would benefit this site greatly. As you see, all the parking that Summit has is out front, and as we know for this application, the building is located out front, entrance is located in the back, so there should be some way to get people to and from that, across this property as the fence comes down.
The end of that seven-foot walk in the back, where they put a couple of steps up and a short little.
Just to bring it in.
He's just summiting.
We are planning on having a entrance on the front as well.
Okay, so you have the, so you can move it up higher.
Yeah, path going from the sidewalk to that patio area that I was speaking of, and then there's a door right there.
Now, are those three spaces intended for staff or?
They're for staff.
So I think that's our comment is, if it's winter time and plowing, if there's a sidewalk, that can be shoveled and maintained to get staff in and out versus the intent that, you know, they gotta walk around the snowdrifts and out of the street and this.
Yeah, and we may even put an additional path on the, yeah, on the east side of the building there, which goes around to the back, you know, so they're able to just walk in the back as well.
Yeah, so it's.
It's a little better than having the sidewalk, having people cross right at the ATM machines, where people can really can't.
You'd look, you'd look to have people crossing right around this area, getting them over here, possibly talk to Summit about having some striping done to say, you know, pedestrians coming this way, maybe a yield to pedestrian sign, to bring them over to their cars safely.
That's a good option.
Something that we.
The only thing that is tricky about that is, while it's requiring an improvement on the adjacent property owner's property.
Yeah.
So I guess.
Well, so is the sidewalk, they're talking about putting the sidewalk.
That's, that's the part I'm talking about, it's not the striping, but just the sidewalk itself, you know, the board can't require improvements on somebody else's property that they have no control over, but we can say we'd like to see a walkway on your property, and obviously if we can coordinate it with Summit, but I think we just need to be a little hesitant about requiring improvements on somebody else's property that the applicant has, you know, does not have control or designated ownership of.
Well, let me ask you, what, what are your operating hours?
They are, well, typically nine to six or seven, and then on the weekends, eight-thirty to three-thirty.
So about the same operating hours as Summit?
Yes.
So, and if that's gonna be for staff parking, the only concern I have is that they're gonna be walking across and in, egressing to there from.
If you have most staff, you're going in and out, you're in once a day and you're out once a day, you know, I'd rather see that than have customers every twenty minutes or something running across traffic and back and forth.
As a fallback, they could always walk to the sidewalk.
What three spaces are we talking about?
Cross over.
Dave, this is part of the agreement they have with Summit, is three spaces used.
Right there. I assume those last three.
Yes, I, I believe so.
Furthest from their door, closest to yours?
Yes, yes.
Obviously, we do have, we've had them sign cross-access, cross-parking agreements, so if and when the neighboring property to the west redevelops, they would have to sign something similar, so this could be a short-term situation, is, you know, we're looking at four parcels down, you know, in September, that's your application, is looking at four parcels down, they're taking two lots, so as these turn over, they would have to sign a cross-access, shared parking agreement as well, so, you know, that would help to alleviate everybody's parking in this land.
Once the drive aisle is open, that goes away. Continue, even if the ownership changes?
Yes, yep, they carry with the parcel, so they're filed agreements and then they carry with the property. I don't believe Summit has one, Summit has a cross-access, Summit does not have a shared parking agreement, that's why we shared that in the initial application to talk to Summit, encourage applicants, applicant to talk to them in order to make sure that, you know, that's accommodated.
Slightly different subject, the totes are on a gravel bed, is there any reason why that can't be concrete or asphalt, just so it doesn't become a.
That's what we approved the first time.
Unslightly wet bed?
Better to, easier to maintain if it's a concrete pad.
You would think.
Yeah.
I have no objection to that.
They, my thoughts are they're right at the limit of their impervious area, but we can make the recommendation and they could, that could be something they could go into the zoning board, I think they're right at seventy percent.
Can they, I thought they had thirty-five percent green space, they're right at thirty-five percent, right?
They're allowing.
They're allowing seventy percent.
They're allowing seventy lot colors, so thirty.
With cross-access.
So that's why.
So they've got a little bit of play there, so they could make that impervious.
Yeah, you're right, so, yeah, they have, there's room to play with that. Yeah, under LUMAP, if you provide cross-access, then you can go from a thirty-five percent green space down to thirty percent green space, understanding that you're providing cross-access and meeting the intent of LUMAP. So right now, they're at sixty-five percent on their site.
That can go to seventy, theoretically.
But I don't think the little concrete and the totes are gonna.
Right, and then if we had a, a walkway or something in the front, I think they'd still have room to accommodate that, so I think we can encourage them to have a walkway to Summit, but I think in a resolution, we just need to make sure we're not dictating improvements on Summit's property.
Okay.
But we've encouraged the applicant to, you know, have that conversation, if they can make that connection, then I think that'd be a benefit.
So if we can make that, add that to it, you know, to that.
Yep.
To that, access from Summit, the parking bumpers, never have to be.
Yeah, is the board comfortable with that modification to, you know, we knew this was a tight site to begin with, obviously we knew it had variances.
I, I'm okay.
It's the rest of the boards.
Yeah. Anything else on this?
So we still need to wait for the zoning board, if they don't grant the variance for the parking space, then they're not meeting the code, so technically the board can't approve it tonight without the zoning boards, but do you want to send a letter to the zoning board in support?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend we send a letter, I would, we send a letter to the zoning board in support of this.
Second.
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tidings? Aye.
No other discussion?
Well, the board would move the table at tonight.
Table it.
With the comments we have, we'll prepare the board's comments, the applicant, we've just heard the comments, and then wait to see what the zoning board's action is on it, and then at your September, it'll be a table later, your September agenda and more.
Well, that, that's right, they're not gonna receive this until after.
Well, they have an August meeting, so they're meeting next week.
Oh, we won't see it again.
So, September, September tenth, it'll be a table item with the board.
Right, right, but we may or may not have a decision that we see here.
They have a meeting next week, they should have a decision.
It's up to them, but.
It's up to them.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, you first did. Yeah, I was, yeah, Mr. Canauer, I thought you did, right?
You wanna take the lead on it?
I'll take the lead on it.
Okay, Tidings?
Disable it.
Bastian? Bastian, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay.
You sure?
Bastian?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
So it's tabled for this evening and wait for the zoning board and.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Nice seeing you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll be sending out a table and resolution with whatever happened.
Okay, excellent, have a good evening.
Any other business?
He's just waiting someone else's time.
So now I can adjourn.
Now you can use that word.
Now I can say you were good.
I mean, AJ does it every time anyway, so.
I'll second, I'll second his motion.
They're adjourned.
All those are papers.